This time if everyone will rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag followed by our invocation. Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indelible, with due liberty and justice for all. Will you bow with me, please? Our dear gracious and heavenly Father, we come to you as humbly as we know how to ask your grace and guidance as we conduct the business of the city of Prattville. Help our decisions to be the right decisions, grant us wisdom, in Jesus' name, amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Striplin.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Reniger.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Here.
Call the meeting officially to order at 6:03 PM today, Tuesday, January 17, 2012. The character trait of the month is availability, making my own schedule and priorities secondary to the wishes of those I serve. Fellow council members, you should have received copies of the minutes from our January the 3rd, 2012, meeting. This time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. So here. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Councilman Fink, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowles. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to be made to the minutes? Councilman Miller.
I just want to take the opportunity to applaud our new city clerk and assistant city clerk because I think they've continued the tradition of doing a good job with these minutes and about all I ever find is, you know, little minor, minor things occasionally, something where you want to add a little bit or make a point that perhaps wasn't captured. But bottom line is, I really do applaud you and commend you for what I think has been a good job with the minutes.
Any other comments? All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. This time, we'll open the floor up for comments from persons present regarding, excuse me, regarding to any item on tonight's agenda. It must be an item on the agenda at this time, and then we'll open up the floor after the agenda is exhausted for other comments from the general public. Is there anyone tonight that would like to discuss an agenda item with us? Ms. Finnegan.
My name is John Lee Finnegan. I live at 211 Deere Trace Street. I am coming before you to speak of my disbelief of resolutions number 10 and number 11 being considered tonight, much less if they are even on the agenda. At the January 3rd council meeting two weeks ago, Mayor Gillespie stood before you and stated in part, "So I challenge the department heads today to go ahead and reduce the 2012 budget by $1 million." So that's going to be our internal goal, to continue to cut expenses to the very, very, very bone. In Sunday's, January 15th, Montgomery Advertiser story about Mayor Gillespie's first year, it stated 35 positions were cut through retirements and attrition, and another dozen employees lost their jobs. According to the city's website, as of 1/6/12, Prattville's accounts payable and debt balances Yet, even with this information being available to you, you are considering expending a total of $10,765 to hire two co-op high school students so they can gain work experience and practical job skills. This city workforce has been diminished by at least 47 people, yet we budgeted for these students who, according to Mrs. Thrash, are going to assist during the processing of business licenses and other critical functions because the finance and judicial departments don't have enough employees. This doesn't make sense. She also informed me these students were budgeted at $7.55 an hour for 662 hours annually each, and benefits would include required FICA and workman's comp. Mrs. Thrash stated the departments are working very hard to get all the revenue entered as quickly as possible. Business licenses, for example, are due annually by January 31st. Why then do we need these students for the whole budget year if this work is being done as quickly as possible? Why couldn't they volunteer their time? They would still be getting the work experience and practical job skills along with the knowledge they are helping the city. Look at the citizens who have done just that, the fireworks committee and the Otoga Creek Cleanup Group, for example. A few years ago, I adopted two miles and picked up litter. I didn't expect to get paid. I did it to help clean up the city and free up the street department personnel to be able to pick up litter elsewhere. There are many, many fine citizens who volunteer their time with no expectations of payment. There are other ways of this money could be allocated. If the help is really needed, hire back laid off city employees part-time, or pay current employees overtime. As the last resort, if it is against regulations or laws to have students volunteer or work for free, hire them only for the actual time it takes to get these critical functions processed. Of course, this money could also be used to pay vendors, or here's an idea, why not just use it to pay down the bond debts? How can you possibly justify approving these resolutions knowing the state of the city's finances? Just because the practice of hiring students is the way it has always been, doesn't mean the practice has to continue. If these students need work experience, let a private company hire them. Don't make Prattville's taxpayers shoulder the cost. Remember, the mayor wants to continue to cut expenses to the very, very, very bone, and this $10,765 represents 1% of the $1 million he hopes to cut from this year's budgets. You didn't help do that at the January 3rd meeting, but you can help tonight by not passing these resolutions. Councilman, this really is a no-brainer. Thank you.
Any questions? I will tell you, Ms. Finnegan, that I sponsored both of these items.
I know you did.
And I sponsored them at the request of Mayor Gillespie.
Okay.
So the answers to your questions would have to come from him, because I did this basically as a favor for him.
But you vote on it.
I will vote on it.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, I will. Is there anything else?
No, I'm fine.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
If I might, if you indulge me some.
Go right ahead.
And I would like to give just a little bit of history here, and I guess one reason why we do need, in my opinion, these part-timers, is that, for example, I've been multitasking. Our finance director, he has been multitasking also. He is, besides the assistant finance director and being the interim finance director, he's also overseeing the IT department. So he has had a lot on his plate. The judicial department, they lost a personnel also, which I have been able to move personnel around, and I do have somebody in there, but not with the full amount of hours. But also with the increase in load, increase in work that they've had over in judicial, and also in our finance department, they are getting behind. And I think it's, this money will be very well spent for the taxpayers because it will help us keep up to date with all of our bookwork. And I do thank you for coming up here and bringing up some very good points, but I, being a taxpayer, I also believe this is some very good money spent. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to address the council this evening on an agenda item? I see no one else. We will move on to the mayor's report. Mayor, do you have a report for us this evening?
Hi, Mr. And if you will, would you please, a little bit, I'd like to invite Captain Hamm up here and introduce her to the council and to the audience here. She has, she's been with the city of Prattville since 93, 1993. In 1996, she was promoted to a corporal. 1997, moved over to an investigator. 2001, she was promoted to a sergeant. 2005, a lieutenant. And now, in 2012, she is one of our captains. And I just wanted to, she has been, she's been going above and beyond the duty, and I think she most certainly deserves this promotion. And I just wanted to bring her in front of you guys and introduce her, and I'm certain most everybody sitting up here has already met her in passing in the hallway, but I truly believe that she, she truly deserves this, and which I don't know if she has anything to say, but before she does, I'd just like to give her a round of applause.
Thank you. Thanks. I don't have a speech, but I want to just thank God for allowing me to get to this point in my career. I thank the mayor, the chief, and to the city council members. I appreciate you all entrusting the investigative division in my hands, and I will do a good job. Thank you.
Well, not only that, but with the taser and the forty caliper on her side, I trust her with a lot more than, than just that job. But thank you for everything. Okay, let me move along and get my little iPad opened up here, so I can go off my report on that. Like I say, introduce Diane Hamm there. I know she's going to be a great resource for Chief Huggins over here, and all I can see is a great, great future for her in the city of Prattville. One little good news I want to go ahead and talk about right now, is you know, a lot of times, as a council member and also as a mayor and as a businessman, I, you get quite a few phone calls, and a lot of times the phone calls you get are, is somebody complaining. Last week, though, I've gotten several phone calls. I actually had one person that come by City Hall and telling me that he'd gotten his water bill. And I was very, very surprised that with the new wastewater rates in it, that their water bill had decreased, and they were pleased with what they've been seeing coming out of that department. And so I just wanted to pass that along. If I do have a very negative phone call, I'll let you guys know about that, too. But as of right now, the only thing I really have to talk about is a good one, is a good phone calls on that one. Another thing I'm going to go ahead and talk about tonight, before moving along to our agenda items, is Continental Eagle. I know there's been a lot in the news, Facebook, just a lot of talk around Prattville about the, about what's going on with Continental Eagle. And at this point in time, I have had a meeting with the CFO of Continental Eagle here in Prattville, and he tells me that they are going through a RIF program, they are weighing all their options, but they do have, they still have the property for sale over at, here, just on the other side of the creek. And we are in communications with them, and also some realtors, and I'll keep giving updates as they come in. The other thing I actually talked about at the last council meeting was a year to the day. A year to the day, at 5:00, I stepped in as mayor. There's a lot of things, I guess, I could say about it, but in reality, all I really want to say is that, being a year to the day, we've made great strides toward a good financial footing. This could not have been done without the city employees or the citizens of Prattville. Full disclosure, as you guys have heard me mention many, many times, is a new motto around Prattville, around City Hall, also along with the understanding that we, the city, are a service-oriented company, and the citizens are our paying customer. Gentlemen, that's all I'm going to say about my first year in office right then, right today, because it's, it really hasn't been just about me, but it's been about everybody around the, around the city, whether you're a city employee, a counselor, a citizen, a vendor. I think the first year has been good, and I can only see things moving in the right direction. There again, moving on along, I want to talk a little bit about our Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. It was a very good, very big success. The Otoga County Improvement Association threw a great event once again. I also want to thank CERT for their help in the parade. All the other events that they have been involved with, they have saved the city of Prattville thousands of dollars. And I also want to encourage the citizens and employees of Prattville to check with our local EMA director at the office and inquire about the CERT program. New classes start January 31st, so if anybody who is interested, I'm a CERT member, this one way that you can give back to the, to the citizens of Prattville, to the city of Prattville, and make a little bit of a difference. And not to also mention, if we, hopefully, we'll never have another disaster, but if we ever do, it will help you be a little more prepared, so that way you're not as much of a victim potentially if you are, if you are prepared. One other area I want to talk about is our power bill. Right lately, I've been talking with the department heads, like Ms. John Lee Finnegan mentioned, I've challenged them to cut, attempt to cut another million dollars out of the 2012 budget. One area that we, we're looking at very closely is our power bill. Our power bill has been averaging somewhere between $80,000 and $105,000 per month. So we're looking very closely all over that and seeing which area that we can trim back in, and as we move forward, I'll let you guys know about that. Moving on to the agenda, agenda item number five and six, it's GPS unit for our wastewater department. With this new unit, it helps mapping of our manholes more efficient. Some areas with old unit, if there was some tree lines or some other items in the way, the satellites were not able to pick up with this old unit, and so it can help us move forward, move along a lot more quickly with that. The quarterly goal for the, for the wastewater department is to clean approximately 2,500 feet of our sewer lines per week, and in video, at least 1,000, 1,500 feet of our sewer One thing that I believe in front of you guys on the iPads that you have in front of you, trying to go a little bit green, trying to save, save some of the paper, cut down on our costs, is you'll take, if you take a look at your iPad, you'll see pictures from the ongoing Otoga Creek project. It's where we have changing out, going from some old technology to more efficient technology. We had a grant that came in through ADECA, and so with this, once we get it up and going, we'll, we'll definitely see some improvement in that department, and hopefully, that could be a small decrease in our power, in our operating cost on it. I think there's roughly six pictures there, some old, some new, and anytime you guys have a free moment, please step down to, to some of our plants, and you'll try to get an idea of exactly what all's been going on. I know there's been a lot of talk about our wastewater department since I've stepped in here, moving into an enterprise fund, and just trying to make it more efficient, and getting them the equipment that they need to, to run this department efficiently, and that way help hopefully keep our bills down in it as much as humanly possible. Agenda item number eight talks about the sinkhole that occurred several months ago on North Court Street. We were able to shore it up, so that way it was not a true emergency. We were able to go through the bid process. We have gone through that bid process. It has come back considerably cheaper than what we initially thought, come back at $48,601 to tri-county construction. If you can move forward with that tonight, that way we can move, move forward with that as soon as you guys do. The, I know it's, one of the reoccurring comments I hear is, where is the money? Where is the money? Well, I'm proud to stand here and tell you that we do have cash dollars in our gas tax account, and so if you pass this tonight, we do have the dollars to, to pay for it. So there will be no financing going on with this. Agenda item number 12 talks about our Alabama Fire College contract. You can also move forward with that. Most everybody sitting on the council here tonight remembers some of the, the other agenda items that we have voted for in the fire department, trying to get this training facility up and running, and I think this is just one area that I'll have to tip my hat to Chief Brown and his people. They have, they have got in touch with the Alabama Fire College, been able to bring this, pretty much is going to be a satellite classroom unit for them. We will actually be reimbursed if there's any kind of mockups or props that have to be built. They will either provide us with the materials and money to build them, or with the complete props. So in long term, it's going to be a win for us eventually. I think that we'll actually be generating revenue off of this, but please move forward with that tonight. I also want to talk a little bit about the recycling committee that I've called, I'm asked to meet this coming Thursday, 6:00 PM. Be over at our cultural arts center at Westport Church, right beside the Chamber of Commerce, 6:00. Hopefully, you can show up, and, but if not, I'll be, definitely be bringing a report at the next council meeting on that. Senator Shelby will also be here Saturday, February, February 18th. Want to give everybody a little heads up on that. It's going to be a town hall meeting here in the council chambers at 10:00 AM. That's on a Saturday. Hope you can be here. That same afternoon, 3:00, our Mardi Gras parade. I sent out an email earlier that Mardi Gras parade had been, had been scrubbed, trying to be very conscious about all of our dollars. One of our citizens stepped forward, CJ Martin, she pulled forward. Matter of fact, she's actually going to be the grand marshal in this parade, but she stepped forward and she's been able to pull together, with her help and with other citizens, she's been able to pull together over $2,100, $2,100 to fund this event. So I wish she was here tonight, but, but anyway, hopefully you will be able to participate in that. Her husband is here. Well, and I know he, he works for the ABC Board, and I will say hi, but I don't know exactly how much work he did and how much, I think CJ was real, the motivator behind all that. So I'm glad he's, it was all her?
All her and Bobby.
Well, that's, that's what I've heard, is all her. So her and their son Bobby. So, but hopefully, if you can either participate in the parade, I don't, right now, I don't know if I'm going to be participating in it, or if I'm going to be helping to keep the costs down by working with CERT and being one of our traffic officers out there, but I still got a little bit of time to decide on that. That's all I really have off of my regular comments. Now I'm going to move along to something that was brought up before me just prior to 15, 20 minutes before I stepped in here. I understand there's a possibility that there might be a resolution brought from the floor tonight, containing, pursuing expenditures of about $20,000 to have a consultant come down to the wastewater plant. Gentlemen, right now, at this point in time, I'm going to ask you guys to vote that down. I think it's a little premature. I've been working very closely with Rick Teague, our, our department head. We have made some strides in the right direction. I have tasked him with giving us a 90-day, a quarter, I'm sorry, quarterly, report in and out of his department. We have moved forward with trying to realign employees, trying to make them more efficient. We have several programs that, that he needs to close, close on. One was just the one we just initially, I just talked about. The $20,000 that, that has been talked about in that department is just, it does not need to be spent. We're trying to save, we're trying to cut back, we're multitasking, and just to try to move forward with this at this point in time, I do not believe is a prudent thing to do. So if you will, if that does happen to get brought up tonight, please vote it down. And that's all I have tonight.
Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
This time, we'll move into our status of the city finances. Mr. Mosley.
Provided a revenue statement and expense statement for you again this time. Pretty much the same situation as last month on the revenue, just kind of going through. You'll notice we're 25% through the year. Most everything is around 25%. You'll notice the business license is 0.62%. That is because the renewals didn't go out until late December. That actually went out a few weeks later this year than last year due to the immigration law. There was a lot of questions about, did we have to send anything out right now? Did we not? And we were waiting to kind of get some definitive answers before we sent those out. So that would be the difference on that. One interesting thing of note, if you do take out the 1% sales tax money that we've gotten in this year, overall, we're still up by 0.62%, which is not really bad considering that there have been no major new businesses, retail businesses open in Prattville during the last calendar year. A lot of times when we have a newer retail business, we'll see a jump, a spike, you know, people coming in, something new, something different. So, but it does appear that the revenues are staying steady. The next sheet in your little packet I provided, every month, right around the first of the month, I provide a general tax increase or decrease, just to kind of give you a good idea of what happened the previous month. It's not the full revenue picture, but it kind of gives you a snapshot of what the taxes did. And I think there may have been some confusion over time of what all that included. And so this is, the list I provided is a detailed line-by-line list of everything that is included in that number. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to start providing that information along with that email that I sent out, just so it's very crystal clear exactly what you're, what numbers you're getting. The next little section is the expenses, broken down by department. You'll notice most everybody is pretty much in line, again, it's 25% through the budget year. Most everybody is in line. There are a couple little outliers. One of those is vehicle maintenance and benefits. That's solely due to health insurance costs for that particular department, which is kind of out of our control. Pretty much everybody else is in line or lower, which is always a good thing, spending less than where they are in the year. Another interesting thing of note on the expense side is that what I did was I took out the debt service numbers, so we could see operationally how we're doing compared to last year. And we're, we've actually spent $708,000 less this year than last year at this point operationally. Of course, the debt issue, the debt service issue kind of muddies the water because, you know, we've bridge loans, paying those bridge loans back. We've actually paid half of the bridge loan back. We'll probably pay the third payment this month, and then we'll have one more payment left on that. Another piece that you may notice that's not in here is the enterprise funds. I've been working on a new form that's going to compile just the enterprise funds, revenue and expenditures. I've given a copy of that to Mr. Striplin for him to look over. I'm more than likely going to be emailing that out to everyone tomorrow. I just need a little more time to kind of clean it up, so. But they are running in the black, starting to build a tiny reserve for some of the capital expenditures that are going to be needed later on in the year.
Any questions for Mr. Mosley?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the report.
This time, we'll go into committee reports. Councilman Striplin?
No, sir.
Councilman Wood?
No.
Councilman Miller?
No.
Councilman Bowles?
No, sir.
Councilman Fink?
No, sir.
The Finance Committee did meet since our last meeting, in which we got a review from Mr. Mosley and the mayor on our financial position, and that was presented to us tonight, as well as talking about personnel needs in the various departments. The co-op students were also discussed during that Finance Committee meeting. I will tell you that on January 27th of this year, that is the deadline for letters of intent for those who wish to be considered to fill the District 3 slot. To date, we've only received one letter of intent. So for those of you who live in Municipal District 3, if you'd like to come and join us on the city council, please send in your letter of intent and a resume to our city clerk before close of business on January 27th. Councilman Miller.
Just a clarification, because I had this question initially, that is current District 3, not the one with the redistricting that will be. That is current District 3, not the one with the redistricting that will be next, quadrillion.
We are currently operating on the current district lines, and that's what we have to consider, not what might happen in the future if the Justice Department approves the application. Yes, you're correct. This time, we'll go into the agenda items. First item on the agenda is an ordinance to surplus one vehicle from the Police Department. Councilman Wood, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the Police Department fleet and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. 1992 Ford Ranger. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle through GovDeals.com. Mr. Chair, I so move.
This ordinance is moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fink. By point of order, this must hold over to our next meeting unless there's a move to suspend the rules.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. Any discussion on the move to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspension of the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the rules are suspended and this ordinance is properly before us. Is there any other discussion pertaining to this ordinance? Councilman Bowes?
Yes, sir. It's not in the ordinance, but will this money, the monies go back into the general fund?
Mayor's taking in the affirmative.
Yes, sir.
Okay. No?
I'm sorry, not on this one. This is a drug vehicle. It'll go back into the drug fund account.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? All those in favor of approving this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign saying none, the ordinance is adopted. Item number two is an ordinance requesting to... Okay? Okay. It's an ordinance requesting to surplus one vehicle from the Vehicle Maintenance Department. Councilman Bowes, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus on the Vehicle Maintenance Department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. 1995 Chevrolet C3500. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle on GovDeals.com. I so move.
Councilman Bowes has moved for approval of this ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Wood. By point of order, the rules must be suspended for us to address this ordinance at this time, otherwise it will carry over. Move for suspension by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Striplin. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign saying none, the rules are suspended and the ordinance is properly before us. Any other comments on this proposed ordinance? Councilman Bowes?
Yes, sir. Again, this does not relate where the funds will go back into... Mayor Glassman?
This is one of ours, so it will go back in the general fund.
Okay. Any further questions? All those in favor of approving this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign saying none, the ordinance is passed and approved. Next item is a resolution to authorize the release of funds in an amount not to exceed $1,150 for the city clerk and the assistant city clerk to attend the Certification Training Institute for Municipal City Clerks and Administrators and Master Municipal Clerk Academy. Councilman Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Training Institute for Municipal Clerks and Administrators and Master Municipal Clerk Academy will be held February 1st through 3rd, 2012, in Tuscaloosa, Alabama. And whereas the training is necessary for certification and continuing education, and whereas the institute will include training on municipal elections, and whereas the cost for registration, lodging, travel, and meals to have the city clerk and assistant city clerk attend this training is approximately $1,150. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed $1,150 are hereby authorized and approved for the city clerk and assistant city clerk to attend the Training Institute for Municipal Clerks and Administrators and Master Municipal Clerk Academy. And said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2012 Budget Line Item City Clerk Education, Lodging, Meals, and Travel. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Striplin has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is approved. Next item is a resolution to express the intent of the City Council to have term limits of two consecutive terms. Councilman Bowes, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville believes that it is, that it will be in its best interest of the citizens of the City of Prattville to have term limits, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby declares that it has, that it's in its best interest of the citizens to limit its terms to two consecutive terms effective November the 5th, 2012. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby calls the State Senator Brian Taylor and State Representative Paul Beckman to use their considerable influence and votes in the Alabama Legislature to request that the City Council of the City of Prattville limit its future term limits effective November 5th, 2012 to two terms consecutives. Be it therefore resolved that the, that a copy of this resolution be provided to Senator Taylor and Senator, Senator Taylor and Representative Beckman as evidence of the City Council desire to intent to have the City Council of the City of Prattville term limited effective November 5th, 2012 of two terms consecutive. I so move.
Councilman Bowes has moved this resolution for approval. Is there a second? Is there a second? Councilman Miller?
For discussion, I'll second this resolution.
Okay. Seconded by Councilman Miller. Floor is open for discussion. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Councilman Bowes?
Several people have asked me what this is about. Whenever you're a politician in the making, or wanting to be, you come up with different things that you campaign on. A lot of times, politicians, once they win the election, they never bring those back up. You never hear from them again on those subjects that they campaigned on. This was one of the things I campaigned on. Now, I have learned since I've been in office that it has to go through the state legislature. They can do it two ways. They can term limit the entire state for city councils, and they can term limit the municipality size six, which we are, all the way across the state. So I would say that probably this won't pass tonight, so don't hold it against the fellas. And even if it did, it would not go through the Senate and Legislature because we're having to do it to everyone. But there again, because of the fact that I do believe politicians preach a good preacher during campaign season and never bring it back up, I wanted to bring this up. But I appreciate the time to let me explain myself, and thank you very much.
Any further discussion on this proposed resolution? Mr. McDowell? You and I discussed this in length today. I would like for you to share at this time the information that we discussed of the whole council's aware of the parameters that this particular request would have to fall under.
I think you've got, as Councilman Bowes stated, you've really got two issues here that are possible issues. One is, and I have not researched the entire constitutionality of whether you could do this at all, but you're either going to have to do it through some local legislation because it may very well violate the Constitution, or as he said, you may have to, it'd have to be a statewide thing. Because City of Prattville is what's called a Class VI municipality. It was deemed a Class VI way back in 1970 based off the census. So however many people the City of Prattville had in 1970, if you had that many people in your municipality, you were deemed Class VI, and that never changes. I believe there are approximately 15 or 16 different municipalities in the state that fall under the Class VI label. So if you were to present this to the, to your legislators, then you would have every Class VI municipality affected by this if it was voted on by the legislature. So as Councilman Bowes said, I think you've probably got a, a very uphill battle unless all other Class VI municipalities that are sitting like y'all are in favor of doing it.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Any other comments or questions pertaining to this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Resolution fails, 1 to 5. Next item on the agenda is a proposed ordinance to surplus one Tremble GOXT handheld GPS unit from the wastewater department. Councilman Striplin, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the item listed below is hereby declared surplus of the wastewater department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. Tremble GOXT handheld GPS unit, serial number 4422A42433. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to trade in said inventory to Navigation Electronics, Inc., in return for a $500 credit, which will be deducting, deducted from the cost of one Tremble 6,000 GOXT handheld GPS unit for the City of Prattville Wastewater Department. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Striplin has moved this ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. By point of order, this ordinance will have to be held unless there's a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Striplin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowes. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand, please. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the rules are suspended and the ordinance is properly before us. Is there any discussion on this proposed ordinance? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the ordinance is passed. Next item is a resolution to authorize the release of funds in an amount not to exceed $6,200 for one Tremble 6,000 GOXT handheld GPS unit for the City of Prattville Wastewater Department. Councilman Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas there is a need for one Tremble 6,000 GOXT handheld GPS unit in the wastewater department for the purpose of sewer mapping, and whereas the cost of the unit is $5,345, which includes a trade-in credit of $500 plus a one-year NEI support warranty at a cost of $427, and a two-year hardware warranty extension at the cost of $405. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed $6,200 for one Tremble 6,000 GOXT handheld GPS unit, and warranties are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Navigation Electronics, Incorporated, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2012 Budget Line Item Wastewater Department Capital Outlay. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Miller has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowes. My question is, is this money in the budget? Okay, so the rules do not have to be suspended. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Councilman Bowes?
Do we have the money in hand to pay for it?
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's, I guess, one of the benefits of having our enterprise accounting set up.
Okay. Any further questions? Comments? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by, signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to reappoint Donald Harrod to the Medical Clinic Board. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution?
Whereas a vacancy currently exists on the Medical Clinic Board due to the term expiration of Donald Harrod, 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 excuse me, on March 31st, 2008, and whereas it is the desire of the Prattville City Council to fill that vacancy to ensure the continuity of the board's operation. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that Donald Harrod is hereby reappointed to fill the vacancy effective immediately, and said term will expire on March 31st, 2014, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Fink has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Any discussion on this proposed resolution? Councilman Miller?
What, can, I guess, Mayor, what does this board do?
It's actually a council board, so I don't have, I've never sat on this board, so I cannot answer that question tonight, but I can get the answer for you tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be good if you could follow up on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chair?
Councilman Wood?
You know, Ms. McDowell, will you please?
The board is instrumental to set up, like, for bond issues. It's kind of an entity like cooperative districts and all. It's a conduit, industrial development board. It's a conduit to float bonds, and it, we used to, I think we did one way back 20 or 30 years ago. So it's, it doesn't really do anything other than serve that purpose, that I remember. But I can look, of course.
Yeah, and that might be good, and I appreciate, that helps flesh out a little bit, but, you know, and plus, this appointment, it looks like it's, you know, it expired, we're filling a spot that expired three years or so ago, so that would help me just to learn more about this in particular, especially since it's medical. So, but that helps a little bit, but if I could, you know, get some follow-up on that question, that would be even better. Thank you.
Best example was the Charlton Place, the father, that was, it was used for some of that, whatever that was, place in Datesville. It was used. That's the last time it's been used.
Okay. So it's there if we need it, but it, then you got a lot of stuff waiting for it to act on.
Any further questions about this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to award bid number 012-001 to Tri-County Construction in the amount of $48,601 for the North Court Street Pipe Replacement Project. Councilman Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas the City of Prattville is in need of replacing the stormwater pipe at North Court Street in Spanish Oak Drive, whereas funding for said improvement has been allocated in the FY 2012 budget on the engineering stormwater, and whereas the bid was led and sent to eight vendors, and whereas seven bids were received, and whereas Tri-County Construction was to low-responsible in the amount of $48,601. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 012-001 in the amount of $48,601 to Tri-County Construction for the North Court Street Pipe Replacement Project for the City of Prattville, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2012 Budget Line Item Engineering Stormwater. Be it further resolved that Mayor Bill Gillespie Jr. is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary for the completion and payment for this project. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Councilman Wood has moved this resolution. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Fink. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Councilman Bowles.
It was brought to my attention yesterday, and being a holiday, we didn't really have time to get the answer to this, but there are actually two Tri-County constructions in the state of Alabama. One in Selma, that's Tri-County, Inc., and one in Gwinne, that's LLC. Do we know what's?
Selma.
Selma.
Yes.
It's from Selma?
Yes.
Okay, could we insert that in line 18? Could I move to have that inserted in line 18, so we know which one it is? On line 18, I'd like to have Tri-County Construction LLC inserted.
You want that, the proposed amendment?
Yes, sir. Do I need to write that up real quick?
I would like you to write that up. While you're doing that, I'm going to go to Councilman Wood for his comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item, gentlemen, as you know, has been pending probably for a year or more. The whole of there, I guess, if you all remember the situation we had out east, it hadn't gotten to that point yet, but as it continued deteriorating, especially with the type of rain that we have now, it just get worse and worse. So hopefully, now that it, we have some funds to go ahead and repair it, I urge you all to pass it while we got this minimum amount to repair this project. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further comments on this proposed resolution? Are you prepared with your amendment, Councilman Bowles?
Two seconds now, will be.
Mayor?
To give District Six a little extra time, like I mentioned earlier, we do have some fuel tax dollars set aside, special account for certain projects like this, paving and so forth, but we do have the dollars ready to be spent, and that way they, there will be no, no loans taken out on this, and we do hope to have this started on very quickly and, and have it finished up, and also very quickly.
Okay. Councilman Bowles?
I'd like a motion to insert in line 18, whereas Tri-County Construction, Inc., the Inc. would be added, and on line 26, after the word "construction," Inc. be added also on both those lines.
Y'all have heard Councilman Bowles' proposed amendment to this resolution. Is there a second?
Mr. Point of order, please.
Councilman Strippin.
Are we correct on the LLC and the Inc.? The information that I have from Champlis Engineering says Tri-County Construction LLC submitted the lowest bid.
Is it LLC? Oh, I apologize, I had mine backwards. Dyslexic. I'm really dyslexic, I apologize. All right, I've changed it. So on line 18, I'd like behind the work construction to be LLC, on line 26, behind the work construction LLC.
That is your amendment?
That is my amendment. I so move.
Heard Councilman Bowles' amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Woods. Is there any discussion on the proposed amendment? All those in favor of amending this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? The amended resolution is before us. Is there any further discussion on the amended resolution? All those in favor of adopting the amended resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the amended resolution is adopted. Item number nine is a resolution to grant a retail beer and table wine license, off-premise only, to Keith Baker and Brian Baker of B&amp;K Management, LLC, doing business as Purple Crow Store 314. Councilman Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas Keith Baker and Brian Baker of B&amp;K Management, LLC, doing business as Purple Cow Store 314, have obtained a business located at 101 Highway 82 bypass west in Prattville, Alabama, which is a retail store, whereas the owners of said business have applied for an off-premise retail beer and table wine license. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the issuance of an off-premise retail beer and table wine license to the business located at 101 Highway 2 bypass west, Prattville, Alabama, to Keith Baker and Brian Baker of B&amp;K Management, LLC, doing business as Purple Cow Store 314. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Mr. Wood has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Strippin. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed resolution? All those in favor of approving this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Item number 10 is a resolution to authorize the hiring of one co-op student employee for the finance department at a cost not to exceed $5,382.50. Councilman Strippin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas in partnership with Prattville High School, the City of Prattville provides the opportunity for students to gain work experience and practical job skills through employment with the city, and whereas the City of Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the cost of such employee for the remainder of the budget year will not exceed $5,382.50 for salaries and benefits. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $5,382.50 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring a co-op student, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2012 budget line items, finance department, salaries and wages, co-op student, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So moved, Mr. President.
Councilman Strippin has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Councilman Miller.
I guess this is, right as it's written, it's for the remainder of the fiscal year, but I understood from the, some of the introductory comments that this was to work with the business license issue, turning around those bills and receipts and whatnot, sort of as a short-term thing, so I'm trying to reconcile those two, or are there additional duties that would carry it through the remainder of the fiscal year? Yeah, come on up, and Ms. Thrash, you might as well come on up, too.
Yes, as you know, we are working with about half the staff that we had last year in the finance department. Most of those are higher up. There's only certain things that, that I can do as a finance director to keep internal controls in place. These people, the co-op students, won't be handling money. They will be doing copying, filing, all remedial things to help take some of the burden off of the revenue clerks and the revenue officer, so that they can actually do the business of bringing in money and going out and enforcing laws that the city has for revenue.
And you anticipate that through the rest of the fiscal year, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's kind of an ongoing thing?
It'll be through the summer, yes, sir.
Okay, and I guess my next question is, what is, this work out, too? I know this is the total amount, the 5,000 plus, but that's sort of for the whole, the whole cost of it. What is actually going to be the hourly rate that they'll be paid?
I think it's 7.55 an hour.
So what went into the decision to make it more than minimum wage?
There are several requirements with the new Healthcare Reform Act that require that you have certain amount of salary to your employees, or they fall into the category of having to offer benefits. So we don't have any minimum wage positions at this time, and it's considered, it's on our pay plan for a student or co-op position if council chooses to fill that position at the 7.55 an hour rate. Plus the tasks that they were doing, that's basically what it was deemed necessary to pay someone to do that, whether they're a student or anyone else.
But they're in high school.
These particular people that we're discussing would be high school students, yes.
So it would be reasonable to assume that for some of them, this might likely be a first, what I call, a real job?
Certainly.
Okay, so I missed, I didn't quite get that first comment, I think, that you made with the, the help, the reform.
There was, there was some thought with healthcare reform, some part of that that goes into who you have to offer benefits to. It looks at the total salary that an employee earns, whether they're part-time or full-time. So in, in preparing the pay plan, two summers ago, we were dealing with all that new information. So in order to get through the new minimum wage law, we had to increase it so that we didn't have to deal with that if we had part-time employees who weren't paid enough but worked enough hours, that they were going to be caught in that situation. That was the thought behind that.
Okay, so there was some, that makes sense. And last question, how would these individuals be selected?
The high school faculty, the teachers that actually work with the students daily will make recommendations, and then we will actually interview those students, and we'll do a background check, which is criminal history and driving record, and they'll go through our drug testing procedure.
Okay, so I guess what I'm getting at, there won't be any sort of, it's because of whose kid they are, whatever relative, or they've got a relative working for the city, or whatever.
No, they, they send the students to us, and we typically, unless, unless there's a problem with the background check, there's no, it's, it's not handled that way, no, sir. It would be based on faculty recommendation from the, from the high school.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you, just to both of you.
Any further questions pertaining to this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Resolution is adopted, 5-1. Next item is a resolution to authorize the hiring of one co-op student employee for the judicial department at a cost not to exceed $5,382.50. Councilman Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas in partnership with Prattville High School, the City of Prattville provides the opportunity for students to gain work experience and practical job skills through employment with the city, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the cost of such employee for the remainder of the budget year will not exceed $5,382.50 for salaries and benefits. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $5,382.50 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring a co-op student, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2012 budget line items, judicial department, salaries and wages, co-op student, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Fink has moved for adoption this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Strippin. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? It's adopted, 5-1. Item number 12 is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Alabama Fire College to host the regional training facility. Councilman Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas the Fire College has requested to utilize the premises located at 290 Eklund Boulevard, Prattville, Alabama, to provide classroom space and associated facilities for training use, and whereas the Fire College will supply personnel, supplies, equipment, props, and expertise necessary to provide such training, and whereas the city shall be compensated for providing use of training space as outlined in Exhibit A. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the contract with Alabama Fire College and Personnel Standards Commission to utilize the premises located at 290 Eklund Boulevard, Prattville, Alabama, to host a regional training center beginning January 17th, 2012, and shall continue thereafter until January 17th, 2015, unless sooner terminated in accordance with the provisions outlined in the contract. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize, empower, and instruct the mayor of Prattville to execute said regional training center agreement for and on behalf of the City of Prattville. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Miller has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Councilman Miller.
Can I ask Chief Brown to come down to fill the cen on this?
Thank you for asking.
Your honor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This whole concept has been discussed probably over six years. I guess over a year and a half. Alan, you might as well walk up here. Over a year and a half, we had a town hall meeting at Bass Pro with several departments in the state of Alabama, the ones that were on the fire committee, they even remember that. And this council and administration moved forward, you bought the facility, the training tower. Not only that, is the quality instructors that we have, and they've had those for years, very, very knowledgeable. Before I go any further, I'd like to thank Commander Owens, he's over the training facility along with Lieutenant Roberts, all the hard work they do. He was up at the Fire College today dealing with a recruit class that'll start here February the 27th. There will be people coming in, staying in our motels, eating in our restaurants, and we'll also be compensated for that. We do not have anyone in it, but that's what I mean. Classes that we're already teaching now, we're just going to get paid for them, or I'm going to send them free tuition. It's a win-win. I discussed with the mayor earlier today, and plus in several other meetings we've had, the, the training budget should come down, but it's just going to take time to look at. I hope we're just paying for medic school out of the training budget, the 40-plus thousand that we have now, and I hope this thing zeros that out, and we're moving forward, and it takes care of business. But to get into the contract side of it, the state Alabama, the Standards Commission, I'm meeting with them tomorrow, their concept is, the state Alabama is, they want everybody to get the training, and when you are selected among the departments around us to be a regional training center, Alabama Fire College Prattville campus, we were very honored from the hard work that Alan's bunch has done. But I hope you'll move forward with this, it's a positive thing for the City of Prattville, Prattville Fire Department, something that we've all looked forward to, that's been on the fire committee and the fire department. Any particulars, I'm going to turn it over to Alan, because he's, he's the expert on this. Thank you, Alan.
Are there any questions that y'all would have for me?
Any questions from the council?
No.
I guess not.
Okay.
Just have to say thank you.
Thank you.
If the, if the council passes this tonight, and the mayor will sign two contracts, I have a meeting with the Standards Commission in the morning, we may be the first or second.
We'll be the, we'll be the first of six that they will grant this. Tomorrow they will sign off on it, vote for it, vote on it, and we'll be one of the first of the six in the state.
And this, this, this choice of Prattville wasn't just because we had this new facility, it was because we submitted a proposal, we were graded, we had site visits, I mean, we jumped through.
We did. There were several site visits, we had to submit basically a resume, and you stand on the instructors you have, plus the proximity of the interstate, the motels, the quality lab, all that was involved in it, and plus our type of facilities. But it was, it was a long process.
Out of 35 departments that submitted their applications, there are only six right now that are regional centers, and the rest of them are kind of satellite to us. In fact, Montgomery, all under us, Talassee, and Thorpe's, and we're kind of governing them in what classes they can teach and when they can teach it, so.
Sounds good, and I want to commend you as well for the role that you've played, and Chief Brown's kind of kept me up to date on that, but I also think Chief Brown's underselling part of his role, and I applaud you as well, you and all of your, your staff for bringing this to this point, and I certainly encourage the council to, to support this contract, this proposal for the contract.
Thank you, President. Councilman Fink?
If I could just have a point of privilege, I, I had the, the great honor and distinction of serving my first term on the fire committee. I think Councilman Miller was the, was the chair of that committee, and, and it's, it's, it's fantastic when something like this comes together, because you guys did, you guys had a vision, and Chief Gann had a vision, you had a vision as well. To see something like this come to fruition, and it's not only the dollars we're going to generate, it's also the savings that we're going to have, as well as recruits not having to be separated as much from their family, because they're going to be in Tuscaloosa for X number of weeks, and the costs associated there, you know, so we're going to be able to do a lot of this training here, and I applaud you guys for it. It's one of those things where the, the hands of government sometimes do turn slow, but you guys were steady. I know it wasn't just the council's support, we had, I think, leadership at Toga County kicked in, $1,200 or $1,300 to buy the big ladder that's out there, so it, it, one of the good things we've done, I'm proud of it, and I'm proud of what you guys do for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Thank you, gentlemen. All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand, and the opposition by a like sign, saying none, the resolution is adopted. This exhausts our regular agenda, is there anything tonight to come from the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I have a resolution from the floor, please.
Yes, sir.
Whereas, on December 17, 2011, the City Council of the City of Prattville, Prattville, Alabama, adopted an annual operating budget with an effective implementation date of October 1, 2011, which established and directed the budgets of the wastewater and sanitation departments be operated as enterprise funds, and whereas the City of Prattville routinely provides resources for certified training and continuing education, and whereas the City of Prattville desires to provide the wastewater department with consultative training services, including but not limited to planning, development, and implementing a multi-year master plan, projecting personnel needs for the same period of time, preparing multi-year budgets, preparing a schedule of equipment upgrades and the payment thereof, other duties and responsibilities commensurate with managerial and monthly reporting needs, whereas there is no recent history of utilizing enterprise funds at the City of Prattville, and whereas the City of Prattville does not employ personnel with background or experience in developing or implementing an enterprise fund, now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the contract with Goodwood Mills and K Wood for $15,000 to provide consulting services for the City of Prattville wastewater department, beginning January 17, 2012, and ending on September 30, 2012, be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize, empower, and direct the mayor to execute a contract for services with Goodwood Mills and K Wood for and on behalf of the City of Prattville. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Striplin has moved this resolution for adoption, is there a second? Second by Councilman Miller. By point of order, this resolution will hold to our next regularly scheduled meeting unless there is a move to suspend the rules. Who moved? Councilman Fink has moved for suspension of the rules, is there a second? Second by Councilman Striplin. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, the City of Prattville has a longstanding policy of utilizing professional personnel, especially, we just heard from the fire chief, either by hiring them as staff or providing for ongoing education, we provide training, certification, recertification in the area of public safety, we provide continuing education units for our own staff, CPA, engineer, city clerk, and probably several others. We, as a city, are embarking on a new venture with the enterprise funds. Multiple funding computations for the wastewater department creates an opportunity to address each revenue stream with appropriate expense accounts.
Councilman Striplin, I hate to interrupt you, but the motion on the floor is a motion to suspend the rules.
Pardon me?
The comments are on the suspension of the rules? Are there any? Okay, are there any further comments on the proposal to suspend the rules? Saying none, all those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand, and the opposition by a like sign, one vote kills the suspension, this resolution will be carried over to our next meeting. Is there anything else that needs to come from the floor for the council to address tonight? Okay, we will open the floor up for comments from the public, you may address the council on any item of business tonight. Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name, your address, and state your business.
My name is John DeVoe, and my address is 510 Vendale Road, and what I'd like to do is address the issue of the resignation of Councilman Argo and the refilling of that seat, as I understand it, when they utilized that special selection process that they utilized in order to fill the District 1 seat with Councilman Striplin, that the League of Municipalities had said that, you know, the city could do it that way, but it is my position that while the city can do it that way, I don't feel like that's the best way to do it, because I think to protect the integrity of the process, the best way to do it is to have a special election, and that the people of that district select for themselves who they want to represent them on the City Council, and that other process that was utilized in the case of the District 1 seat, I felt kind of usurped the role that the people of that district is supposed to play in that process through a special election. I hope the City Council will consider that as they look at refilling the seat of Councilman Argo, and give the people of that district the opportunity to do what they're supposed to do in that process, and that's to have a special election, and vote for the person that they want to represent them in that district.
Anything else?
I don't have any.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am?
Laura Lee Boone, 210 Phone Lane, this morning I was driving through Prattville, and I noticed Councilman Bowes coming down from his new residence high up on a hill with a vehicle full of garbage, and I was laughing to myself as I'm driving to school, and I see him get out of his vehicle and begin to unload the garbage onto the street, and the reason I was laughing was twofold, first of all, I live on a hill that is much steeper than Councilman Bowes', and I did the exact same thing this morning, I loaded my vehicle with my sneaky garbage, smelled up my vehicle, actually got something really yucky in the car, and had to clean the vehicle when I got home, put the garbage on the side of the road, and this was all prior to seeing Councilman Bowes do this, and my point is, my second reason for laughing was I was thinking, where are his garbage cans? Y'all remember Councilman Bowes' garbage cans? You know, he was talking about things that we think about in our campaigning in our elections, and it's true, we don't forget what y'all say you're going to run on, but you know, you live and learn, Councilman Bowes, and I am so glad that I did not have to run down the hill dragging one of those large garbage cans this morning, and you would have been doing the same thing, you know, had it gotten away, you would have been in the middle of Hardee's with your trash, so just wanted to tell him, you know, we know what you're thinking, that some ideas are good in the beginning, and you get the wisdom of some other people getting involved, and that's the reason we have a council instead of a one person, and just want to thank you for your ideas, all of you, and I just thought that was a point of humor this morning, and I'm glad some of your ideas don't pass.
Any comments from Mrs. Boone, Councilman Bowes?
That's why you sent me drive that old ugly brown truck home on Monday night and Thursday night, so I can take my garbage to the bottom of the hill, and if we did have a garbage can, I would have it hidden in the bushes in the bottom and drag it out. So yes, thank you, Laura Lee, it was fun seeing you this morning.
Any further comments? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to address the council on any item of business this evening? Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
No, sir.
Councilman Striplin? Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ms. McDowell, you may have to help me with the things that I'm going to, I'm going to kind of speak to what Mrs. DeVoe spoke about, as we know, we do have a District 3 seat available, the process is in place for the council right now to fill that seat, but correct me if I'm wrong, the council can fill that seat, or the council can not fill that seat and wait until the municipal elections this coming August, and the citizens of District 3 will have that opportunity, am I correct?
That's my understanding, you have no legal requirement to fill that seat.
Thank you.
Councilman Miller? Councilman Bowes?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Fink? Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, February 7, 2012, 6:00 p.m., right here in the council chambers, this time the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilman Fink, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Striplin, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye, and the opposition by a like sign, saying none.